Regular meeting of the planning board of the township of Bloomfield Tuesday, June 22, 2021 is now in session. Notice of the time, date, location, and the agenda of this meeting to the extent unknown was provided at least 48 hours prior to commencement of this meeting and the following matter pursuant to the provisions of Chapter 231 of the Law of 1975, the Open Public Meetings Act. One, by posting such notice on both in boarding the municipal building, and two, by mailing such notices to the offices of the Independent Press, Bloomfield Life, and Star Culture. Please let's do a salute to the flag. Congratulations to the flag. Please take your role.
Okay. All right. Dr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. LaFort?
Yes.
Mr. Zitka?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey? Mr. Babula?
Yes.
Mr. Lasek?
Yes.
Councilman Rockwell? Mr. Stern?
Yes.
Chairman Laquadia?
Yes.
For the record, Councilwoman Mundell and Ms. Richardson are both absent, and also present is the Board Attorney, Mike Rubin, and the Board Engineer, Anthony Marucci.
Okay, thank you, Nick.
Got it.
Okay. First order of business, can I have a motion to approve the minutes of 41321 and 51121?
I heard Mr. Zitka first.
And who's second in it?
Mr. Stern.
Mr. Stern, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, so moved. Uh, no resolutions at this time. Next order of business. Application of 102 Broad Street LLC as applicant and owner for both bare reaches and any such other leafers may be required from the zoning ordinance of the township of Bloomfield to construct an area on the other side of the building, which is a childcare facility to accommodate new state laws and professional office slash residential PO slash R zoning premises known as map 11, block 245, lot 12, better known as 102 Broad Street. And from the attorney regarding this application, Ms. Lutz, to the planning board, dear Nicole, we request that the board adjourns our upcoming... Now, this was scheduled for July, if everybody remembers correctly, but they're requesting an adjournment now for the July meeting.
No, no, no. They were scheduled for tonight.
Well, no, they were scheduled for July. They wanted to be heard in July originally.
Okay.
From May, we bumped them to July, which caused a little bit of confusion why they weren't going to be ready. So now, tonight, they wanted... Let me just finish reading it.
I got you.
We request that the board adjourns our upcoming July hearing date as the expert witness and report to the board request it will not be available in time. We request that along with preservation of notice and waiver of any time constraints, our hearing be adjourned to November the 9th, 2021. Please advise if you need any, anything furtherance of this request. Thank you for your courtesies, and I await your reply. Speaking to Mr. Rubin about this, uh, we think it's in probably in best interest until Mr. Rubin speaks to Ms. Lutz. To get a concrete reason why they have to adjourn until November and not sooner, I think it's in our best interest if we adjourn this only to the August meeting.
Which is August 10th.
August 10th meeting.
Yep.
We'll adjourn until then, uh, if everyone agrees, and then at that time, if Mr. Rubin is satisfied with whatever Ms. Lutz explains as their reason why they want to keep bumping it until November, then we'll do it accordingly. But from now, we think it's probably in our best interest. We could also dismiss this without prejudice, but we didn't speak to them beforehand, so we're going to do this as a courtesy, because they've been pretty upfront with us regarding this thing. So, in my opinion, I think that's fine. Does anybody have any questions about that? If not, can I have a motion then to adjourn the, uh, this application to the August 10th meeting?
Oh, my God.
That was Mr. LaFort?
Do I have a second?
Second.
I got Mr. Zitka.
Okay, Nick, take a vote on that, please.
Okay. Uh, Dr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. LaFort?
Yes.
Mr. Zitka?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Babula?
Yes.
Mr. Lasek?
Yes.
Councilman Rockwell?
Yes.
Mr. Stern?
Yes.
Chairman Laquadia?
Yes, so moved. And, uh, Nicole, you'll send the, uh, information out to Mr. and Michael, and Mike Rubin, and Terry will reach out to Boba Lutz, their attorney, and find out exactly what's going on here.
You got it.
Okay, great. All right, next order of business. Presentation by Anthony Marucci regarding a new stormwater management ordinance referred to the planning board by the mayor and council. And Mr. Marucci, if you would, please.
Sure. Do I need to be, do I need to be sorry for asking?
That's what I was just going to ask.
It's not, it's not a public hearing, so not necessarily. It's a presentation for the board to determine whether or not it should recommend its adoption.
Okay. Mr. Chairman and members of the board, um, the mayor and council introduced this ordinance at their meeting a week ago, and, uh, it's before the board tonight for your input and approval, so that they can have their second reading and final adoption. I just want to start out by saying that we're not reinventing the wheel here. We already have a stormwater control ordinance on, on the record. It's Chapter 494 in the Administrative Code. And what happened is that the NJDEP came up with this new ordinance basically to bring things more up to date and, and to get more technical in terms of both water quality and water quantity when it comes to stormwater. It establishes minimum standards of, of stormwater management techniques and requirements. And it's only for major developments, and that's important because our town is essentially built up. What we get are redevelopment projects, not new projects, they're redevelopment projects. And right now, there is nothing on the books as far as any redevelopment projects coming, coming on board. For major developments, it's the disturbance of one or more acres of land. That's why I mean it's, uh, it, we're built up, so we don't really have many properties of that size until we get into redevelopment. Or it's the creation of a quarter acre or more of regulated impervious surface. A quarter acre of impervious surface is like 10,000 square feet of a parking lot. So again, that's why I say it's for major developments. This ordinance does not affect our single and two-family residential lots because our minimum lot sizes are 4,000 or four, or 5,000 square feet, so it doesn't affect those. Basically, this ordinance is to protect our rivers. In Bloomfield, it's the third river and the second river. Uh, there's an emphasis on this, in this new ordinance, on green infrastructure, which is basically infiltration of stormwater or filtration by using vegetation or grass whales, things of that nature. So, let me give you an example to, to tell you how progressive Bloomfield was or is in terms of, even before the storm, stormwater ordinance, uh, came into being. Take the Scientific Glass property. Originally, that was approved for development, and then the town purchased it. You had the Scientific Glass property and the Petriella tile property that the town purchased and created an infiltration system. In other words, to, um, alleviate flooding from the third river. What, what happens is when, when the third river comes up, they created a, a basin to take some of the floodwaters to prevent additional flooding, plus they created wetlands. And I'm going to defer to, uh, Paul on this because I have not seen the finished product. I believe Paul has, and I, I don't know, Paul, if you want to comment on that part?
Yeah, sure. Basically, we basically created or are in the process of creating, uh, assuming, um, all the vegetation takes. We literally created over four acres of random freshwater wetlands that wasn't there before. I don't know, in my opinion, that's pretty unprecedented. I don't know of any other towns in New Jersey that can say they did that, particularly a town, as you said, that's as built up as ours. So, um, it's a big thing that we did, and, um, it's something that, um, is probably going to be used as an example to other municipalities in how to deal with stormwater management. I mean, again, we created wetlands, basically.
Just to continue, uh, another, uh, portion of the ordinance talks about groundwater recharge. Groundwater recharge, a, a simple method is take a drywall. When someone builds or, or digs a drywall into the ground and allows that stormwater to, uh, to go into that drywall, you're, you're helping the water table. Um, in, in Bloomfield's case, we don't get, we don't use well water, but in some towns, they depend on well water, so the groundwater table is very important. Then we get into, uh, some of the treatment processes. You'll see the word in there, TSS, that's Total Suspended Solids. And let me, let me try to explain that a little bit. When we talk about stormwater runoff, again, we talk about two types of stormwater runoff. If you have a roof on a building and, and you have the rainwater that hits that roof and accumulates on that roof, that's clean water. And so that's clean water that, that will then eventually end up in, in, in the river. But if you have a parking lot, you have pollutants. You could have pollutants on that parking lot. Pollutants such as oils, uh, just sediment, or, or even remnants of rock salt. Those types of pollutants run off into the storm sewers and eventually into the streams. So now I'm going to give you another example. It's not built yet, but where the board approved South Junior High School, the, the, uh, the residential, um, rehabilitation of that facility, the parking lot in the rear has an underground infiltration system for the, for the wa, for the stormwater from the parking lot and also from the, from the roof of the building. And it has a manufactured treatment facility there, so that, in other words, that water is filtered before it ends up in the second river. So these are the types of methods that are in, that are in this, in this ordinance. So basically, it's to improve the water quality and also the water quantity of, that goes into the streams. I'm, I'm trying to stay general. This is really what the ordinance is about. I, I don't want to get into the, uh, technical part because each individual project can have one, one or more methods, or in some cases, if the methods, uh, can't be complied with, then the board has, there's a, a portion in there where the board can actually grant waivers and, and allow some other type of method. So that's in there also for the, for the board, that, that they, that they can grant, uh, let's say, a, a waiver of, uh, instead of a manufactured system, something else. Um, but that's really the gist of the ordinance. One, something that's very new in there is that when, when you have these major developments and, and the design engineer not only has, designs the plans, he has to give a, a, a report or a stormwater management plan and a maintenance plan for it. Now, that stormwater management plan has to actually be recorded in the Hall of Records. And there's a reason for that also, because tomorrow, I'm not there, Paul's not there, somebody new is there, a new owner comes in, everything's on record, so it has to be maintained. So that's also in this, in this ordinance. And, and added a gist of it. The one thing, the other thing I want to get into is, in our existing ordinance, it was separated in the Administrative Code where it was not part of our zoning ordinance, and, and Mr. Rubin and I had this conversation. Our zoning ordinance also includes site plan and subdivision requirements, and I believe that this ordinance belongs in our zoning ordinance in, in, in a portion of Chapter 315, not separate. And I'll, I'll have Mr. Rubin talk about that, if he'd, like, to comment on it.
Well, you know, part of the, part of what's new here is the ability to grant waivers, um, or the jurisdiction of boards to grant waivers from the, uh, criteria or standards that are set forth in the ordinance for specific kinds of projects under certain conditions. Those waivers be no different than, you know, design waivers from the design standards that are in the, in the land development ordinance now. Um, there's been a debate, probably some people think it's not much of a debate, but I do, about whether or not boards can exercise jurisdiction over ordinances that are not in, in their subdivision, site plan, land development ordinance. You know, can you, for example, uh, can you go out and enforce, uh, the time restrictions? If, if an ord, if, if there's a, a code provision that says that, um, businesses can't be open beyond 10:00 PM or 11:00 PM? Can this, can the board enforce that if it's not in the zoning ordinance? My general opinion is no. But because I think that this is sort of a gray area, if this were, if this were to be established outside of the zone, of the land development ordinance, while still authorizing the board to basically pass upon the, um, uh, compliance of the plan itself and any waivers that might be requested, I think that raises some, some jurisdictional issues that would be more easily or clarified if the ordinance was incorporated into Chapter 315. That concerns me.
Okay. Anthony, anything else?
I want to say the same, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, Mike.
I understand that we're reviewing this because it's, it's an ordinance authorized by the Municipal Land Use Law. Otherwise, it wouldn't come before us. You know, plenty of police power ordinances, parking ordinances and things like that don't come before us because they're ordinances that are under the general police powers in the municipality rather than those authorized by the MLUL. The ability or the power to control stormwater, if you look at Section, uh, NJAC 78, which is the, which are the new regs issued by NJDEP, you'll see that, that among the statutory authorizations for the issuance of those regs is the MLUL. So because this is really an MLUL process, in my view, it should be included in the MLUL component of the Municipal Code.
Okay. If, my only other comment is that, is the fact that this is actually mandated by NJDEP. It's not like we have a choice. Uh, we, we have to approve it.
So basically, we are, uh, what we have to do here tonight is, if the board sees fit, approve it, but send it back to the council then. We can't really deny this or anything, correct?
No, it's really, it's really a determination of consistency with the master plan, and that has stormwater, um, recommendations in it, and as well as any other recommendations that the board sees fit. And if the board sees fit to recommend to the council that codify this ordinance within Chapter 315 rather than as a standalone, um, chapter of the code, then it has the right to, to make that recommendation.
And you think that would be the correct route to do that, correct, Mike?
I certainly think it would make it clearer for all those engineers and developers who are reviewing the land development ordinance and looking for something in there, because that's where they would look.
Right, right, okay.
I also think that it would make it clearer to the board that they have jurisdiction over this, that this isn't something that is in one of those ordinances in the code that they never have to look at. You know, we're not necessarily this board today because we're here doing this, but five, three down the road, you might get an argument from some, from an attorney who's going to say, you have no jurisdiction over this because it's not in your land development.
Right, okay, good. Uh, Mr. Marucci, you agree with that also?
Absolutely.
Okay.
That was my first thought, and that's why I spoke to Mike on it. Um, if, if any member has any questions, I'll try and answer the best I can.
Okay, just real quick, Mr. Lasek, you agree with that also, what Mr. Rubin said?
Yeah, well, the question I have is, as long as the township, or, or let's say, the engineering department or who's designated for this has the ability to enforce years coming down the road, that's, that's all I'd be concerned about, that it's enforceable, um, throughout the township, not just, let's say, a, a planning and zoning issue going down the line.
Well, I mean, I can't imagine that any project that disturbs more than, uh, or increases impertuse by more than a quarter acre disturbs more than an acre is going to come before a board. And in fact, if the ordinance opposes the jurisdiction to enforce this on the board, it's the board's responsibility to ensure through their professionals that, in fact, these regulations are being followed in the design of the stormwater system. There's a checklist that is now going to be part of the checklist. There are all applications applicants have to fill out that, that goes back to the board. This becomes a board responsible facility. You're going to have to do compliance review for the engineering department sometime down the road. But at the end of the day, you know, they've got to come before the board for the first time ever. Before, we just, Mr. Marucci said, yes, it comply, no, it doesn't comply. Um, you know, he can make it comply, I need to see soil first. Now, all this has to be done in advance. They have to submit reports. We have to see all this, it has to be, it has to be testified to, it has to be put on the record, and the board has to essentially confirm that it complies or look to whether or not waivers can be granted for lack of compliance. So, that's a significant jurisdictional shift. From, before, we would just say, yeah, they're supposed to engineer, don't worry about it. Now, the board has to pass upon it.
Right, I, I, in that, but just, well, I guess the question I have is, let's say if, for instance, uh, the board approves, uh, the development, then they have a, let's say, a, a drywall or some type of underground, um, detention system, and they have a maintenance plan which is approved. Uh, two years down the line after approval, we find out they haven't maintained the, the, the system, and it's loaded with sand and it's silt, and it doesn't work anymore. Uh, my only question would be that as long as there is still an enforceable area there where, let's say, the engineering department or zoning officer or whoever is in charge of it can say, you're in violation of the statute, you got to fix it. I, I just want to make sure that.
We're not changing the ordinance. Whoever it's going to be codified, the same enforcement powers that exist today will exist regardless of how it's codified. My concern is not so much the enforcement powers, which do exist in this ordinance for compliance, but my concern is not so much the enforcement powers of the engineering department, because those don't change no matter what's codified. My concern is.
That's fine, I just wanted to make that clear, I just wanted to.
Any challenge to the, to the jurisdiction of the board because it's not in the land development order. That's my concern.
But, but Paul, remember I said that, that these stormwater management plans have to be recorded in the Hall of Records, so it's on record, and, and, uh, so that's another way of, of making sure that it gets taken care of.
Yeah, that's understood. I just wanted to make sure that point was out there because, uh, I just wanted, you know, as I said, going down the line, you know, there's, there's always the possibility that you can run into an issue with one of these systems, and I just want to make, and you're telling me that, so it's fine that, you know, we can, you know, enforce it however we need to at that time.
So, Mike, if you don't mind me asking, the best way to do this, if the board agrees to go forward with this, which I'm sure they will, is to approve it and also but put it up to the coun, to your council that it should be included in our zoning ordinances at Section 315, is that correct?
Yeah, that's my, that's my recommendation, that's Anthony's recommendation.
Great, okay.
I think that, 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 amongst the towns I've worked in, where I've paid attention to this, it is in their land development ordinance, or if they have a separate site plan and subdivision ordinance, it might be in there. But if it is any ordinance that's more clearly adopted pursuant to the Municipal Land Use Law.
Good. Questions, board?
Mr. Stern and Mr. Rockwell.
Uh, who's first?
Mr. Stern, I saw Mr. Stern's hand.
Okay.
Uh, a couple of quick questions. Just, can you clarify for me the, the idea of why, how this is different than some of the projects that we've received who have provided us with stormwater, uh, plans before, uh, that have tested the soil, showed us exactly the impervious coverage, and all, and all the math on that, and then what they're planning to do with all of that stormwater management? How, how is this different? Right, so exactly, so.
Montgomery, Montgomery Street.
Right, so we receive stormwater plans already, full reports telling us exactly what the impervious coverage is, how much water runoff is going to be, preparations for 25, 15, 100-year storms. What, what type of projects are we referring to now that is outside the scope of our current requirements that we're going to be receiving these plans for? Because we already receive them.
But that's why I said that, that right now, we don't have any, uh, projects coming forward. It, it, uh, it, it's any redevelopment project that comes before the board and that we would have, that they would have to comply with this new ordinance. There are.
You know, Montgomery Street, if I may, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, Montgomery Street wouldn't qualify under these new regulations because it doesn't meet the criteria of more than a quarter acre of additional impervious coverage than what was there, or disturbance of more than an acre. Am I able to help that?
But they also have their DEP permit. They already received.
They'd be exempt anyway, but assuming that they weren't exempt, I think the question is, how would the stormwater system that was designed for a project like 108 Montgomery Street, which we can talk about because it was already approved, differ under the current regulations than under the new regulations? I think that's the question they're asking.
But first of all, the 106, 108 Montgomery Street was less than one acre. Um, again, this is for, for projects that are one acre or more. That's why I said they're for bigger redevelopment projects. Uh, for example, like we did in the center, actually, not even those in the center, they weren't that big either. Uh, if you take the, the one at, um.
Let's take, uh, the Bubba Land Use Project.
Westinghouse.
Westinghouse.
Or Westinghouse here.
Westinghouse would actually meet these requirements because in the Westinghouse project, they have an infiltration system. If you remember, the, the, uh, the railroad parcel, they filled that railroad parcel and that was, uh, below grade, and that became an infiltration basin, which is what these regulations call for. Uh, so it really wouldn't affect. And, and that's why I said that we, we've been, we've been utilizing these same types of methods all along, except, it's just that, uh, now they're getting a little bit more stringent on green infrastructure. Open, you know, like, like open infiltration basins, uh, grass whales, and again, also to, to take pollutants out of, out of the, out of the, out of the streams and rivers. But we've been complying, uh, in my opinion anyway, all along on, on our major redevelopment projects.
So I have just quick, two more follow-up questions.
Sure, no problem.
One, I assume this is not retroactive to the last two years of projects. This is only going forward. So, any project, let's assume Westinghouse wasn't compliant with these new requirements the town is, is being required to adopt and meet. Assuming that a project was approved, let's take Montgomery as an example, having just been approved, without a town bound by new state regulations, are we required to go back in a certain period of time and ensure that these folks now meet these requirements?
Well, a, again, Montgomery Street received a DEP permit, and DEP came up with these regulations, so, uh, they got their, their approval around the same time that, that DEP was mandating these, uh, these requirements.
So, but any other project, I mean, my question is, is there any retroactive?
Not retroactive, it is not retroactive.
It's, it's, it's.
Okay.
It's, it's.
Um, the last thing is related to the waivers. So, are, just so I understand, are we saying that this planning board is, has the opportunity based on certain circumstances to provide waivers to different projects if they meet certain criteria, or is it count, the town council?
Uh, it's, it's the board.
So, is, okay. So, just so I understand, because usually people come to us, they're requesting variances on projects because they won't be able to meet certain standards. So will it be the case that when a new, when a project comes tw, for. So will it be the case that when a project comes before us, they'll be requesting a waiver?
Yes, just like they request a waiver for something like the width of a drywall. Project space width.
If I can just give you one example, Mr. Stern. If the applicant can demonstrate that there's a public need for the project that cannot be accomplished by any other means, in other words, I can only generalize this right now, I can't give you any specifics, but.
God bless you.
If you just read that, if there's a public need for the project that can't be accomplished by any other means, the board has to look at each project individually as they come in and make those determinations.
I'm good. Counselor, any other questions?
Yes, a couple of questions. Mr. Marucci, I assume that part of your review of applications in your memo would be putting us in on whether somebody, it is a project that has to, the standard applies to, and whether they're in compliance from the same as you typically do now. I mean, you'll be, you'll be looking for that, I assume.
Absolutely, I have to.
And they will know if they, or they're asking for a waiver, that's part of what they're required to do?
That's correct, yes.
And in matter of, just similar to Mr. Stern, I was just wondering what changed with some of these applications that we've already looked at. So as it applies to Westinghouse and the rural developments over there, isn't there something in the new standards about retaining walls and discouraging building of retaining walls? Those project, those projects have some major retaining walls, they really altered the landscape by building retaining walls. Is that part of this, the new standards?
In the stormwater ordinance, about retaining walls?
Yeah.
I don't think, I don't think so. I mean, I mean.
I'll go back and look, I.
I think, I think what they were referring to there are structural, structural stormwater methods. In other words, not a retaining wall per se, but say a retaining wall type of chamber, a chamber for stormwater, for containing stormwater that's built with retaining walls, they'd rather see the green infrastructure, if you follow me. It doesn't have to, it's two separate issues that we're talking about.
Okay, that's it, thanks.
Mr. Chairman, I understand something.
Sure, Mike.
When we get, and this happens more before the Board of Adjustments than this board, but if we get, you know, a single-family or two-family subdivision, you'll see on those plans almost every time, leakage pits. Now, those, that, those projects would not be subject to these new regulations because they're under their standard in terms of the areas involved, but nonetheless, because they are increasing the impervious coverage, they are still going to be obligated, and if you can correct me, I'm a land engineer, they're still going to be obligated to reduce or at least not increase the amount of runoff that currently exists on the site. So all these smaller projects are still going to have to engage in some stormwater management, it's just that they're not subject to these more new regulations which relate to filtering and things like that. That may not be a completely accurate description of it, so I defer to Mr. Marucci, but I wanted to point that out in a broader context.
Well, this is why I said that we look at each application individually. Even on a single-family home, if they put a sizable addition on that home, I have to look at the stormwater that's coming off of that addition to make sure that it doesn't adversely affect any of the neighbors. And if it means putting a drywall in, as we talked about before, I will recommend that, if it's possible. If it's not possible, they have to do something different, or pipe the water out to the street so it doesn't affect the neighbors. But yes, we still have to do that, we have to look at every project, whether it's an addition on a single, or even a brand-new single-family home. You know, we could have a situation where somebody could just knock down a house and build a new one, a bigger house, and we still would look at stormwater management even on something like that. But it wouldn't affect, it wouldn't impact this ordinance, though.
Counselor, any other questions? Anybody else? Nick, is there anybody from the public on here? Nobody, I said, that portion's closed. And I have a motion then that we approve, or if we, I'm reading, I don't know, but if we approve this, send it back to the mayor and council with the condition that we recommend it be put into the zoning ordinance under section 315, is that correct, Mike, the way I said that?
Yeah.
Okay, can I have that motion by anybody?
Moved.
Who was that, Mr. Stern?
Yeah.
Mr. Zick. Second.
Mr. Zick.
Nick, take a vote, please.
Sure. Okay. Dr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. LaForte?
Shannon, Shannon.
Take yourself off.
It's just, it's a way of life over there.
There you go, smarty pants, take it off of you.
I didn't want you to hear what I was saying.
Okay, okay. Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Babula?
Yes.
Mr. Lasic?
Yes.
Councilman Rockwell?
Yes.
Mr. Stern?
Yes.
Chairman Laquaglia?
Yes.
It's approved.
Okay, and we have a resolution or any regarding this?
We do.
And Councilman Rockwell probably knows this better than I, but under the regulations that were issued by the state, there was a timeframe by which all municipalities had asked to adopt an ordinance consistent with these regulations. We're running out of time, so we were asked to adopt a memorializing resolution tonight so that the council can expedite, second reading, and ultimate adoption of this ordinance before the end of the month.
Yeah, I believe their next meeting is the 28th?
Yeah.
Okay.
So we kind of need to get them a resolution before then. And so I circulated earlier today a resolution, which, as I said in my email, was reviewed by Mr. Marucci to make sure it was consistent with what his presentation.
Right.
Okay.
Could you read that in, please?
Sure, it's simple. Resolution in the matter of the review of a proposed stormwater management ordinance.
I have a motion then to approve the resolution.
I'll move the motion.
Mr. LaForte, do I have something?
I heard, wait a minute, I heard Mr. Stern.
It's fine.
Okay.
I'll give a second.
Yeah, that's a second advantage. I'm sorry, you and I didn't see.
It doesn't matter.
All right. Mr. LaForte?
And also, and Mr. Stern?
Yes.
Got it. All right, you want me to pull the board?
Yes, please, I'll go written down.
Dr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. LaForte?
Yes.
Mr. Zick?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Babula?
Yes.
Mr. Lasic?
Yes.
Councilman Rockwell?
Yes.
Mr. Stern?
Yes.
Chairman Laquaglia?
Yes, so moved. And I'll be in to sign that on Thursday, Thursday morning.
You got it, and then I'll get it to the mayor and council.
You'll have it. Great, anything else to say?
Um, no, just a heads up, I know a couple members know, but on the July meeting, I'm going to put on a discussion about coming back to regular in-house meetings.
Whoa.
I've had enough of this, folks, I've had enough.
You have to run past, you have to run past again?
Yes.
Unfortunately, yes.
Just as an FYI, the.
Very much so.
Just as an FYI, the mayor and council have been back to regular meetings, and so have the health department. So I think it's time the board start discussing this and get it together.
We'll have to cooperate, the meeting, the health department acted guinea pigs for the rest of us.
Well, so.
And the biggest problem is we can't move her in person.
That's correct, that's correct.
July 11.
No, no, wait a minute, it's July 13th.
Oh, July 13th?
Correct.
July 13th, uh-oh.
That's why.
It's the day before my anniversary.
It's the day before, it's not on, get over it.
Yeah. Diane, I want to tell you something, come here a minute.
I love Diane, she'll understand.
All right, so July 13th?
Yes.
Anybody else, anything?
That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Marucci, for your presentation.
Good job, Marucci.
As always, can I have a motion to adjourn? All right, may adjourn.
Good night, everyone.